...that deals with some of the sensitive issues that we as the body of Christ address in our nation. We are thankful for every one of you, many of you we know personally, very precious to us, and we are grateful that you've responded to the invitation to come to this blessed occasion. Why don't we stand for a word of prayer so that we may begin? And hopefully we can do like the pilots that make it for lost time in the air. We will leave that to the skill of our moderator and to the competence of those who are here. I would like to encourage you, if you are sitting away from us, to come as close as possible because we are filming and we would want that we would not show all the empty chairs but to show you. You are far more photogenic than the chairs and you make for a better picture so ever possible and you can come forward, that would be most appreciated. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for all that you have done, all that you're doing and all that you are yet to do. We are grateful. As we meet this evening and as we assemble, we thank you for the promise that your spirit will be with us. For your people have gathered in the name of Jesus on His auspices. For we are your people, we're the sheep of your hand, we're the people of your pasture. We come Lord that we may be light in this dark world, salt, that we may preserve that which is good and that we may benefit the hearers. We come that we may minister grace to the hearers. We come that Father we may address the issues that could affect our nation. We come Lord God that we may be able to encourage each other with sound doctrine, sound teaching, truth, lest we be deceived, lest we be led out of the way, lest the generations to come after us are impaired. We come Father that we might be able to articulate what has been delivered to us, the faith once delivered to us, to affirm it and to state our beliefs without apology. We ask that Lord God you would give us the ability to do so clearly. We pray for your wisdom, we pray for your knowledge, we pray for your understanding that Father at the end of this evening we would all be able to say it was good that we were here. Father wherever our voices and images reach, we pray you would bless those who see, bless those who hear, that by your grace along with us we may grow in grace and in the knowledge of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Now we commend this evening in your hands oh God, now we commit ourselves to you, use us as you see fit, that we may fulfill our calling before you. It's in the much less name of Jesus we ask these things. Let God's people say amen. Thank you, please be seated, and I turn you over to our very capable and competent moderator who will do all the introductions and guide us through our discussions. Please put your hands together for Mr. Corey Lane.
Pastor Paul Leacock. Now I want to welcome you to this panel discussion, inherent dangers of alternative sexuality. As Pastor Paul said, I am Corey Lane, I will be your moderator for this evening. Now this has been organized by the Barbados Rally of Concerned Citizens and Churches and I just want to outline objectives here for you. In this panel discussion, we want to clearly articulate God's plan for sex, outline various ways that deviate from God's plan for sex, to discuss the dangers of deviating from God's plan for sex, to explain the benefits of staying within the boundaries of God's plan for sex, and also to suggest we... I'll pass to Paul Leacock from the First Baptist Church, Mr. Trevor Shepherd from the Setina Medical Center, Pastor Dale Brachet from the Elohim Family Center, Mr. Sean Gibbs, the president of the Barbados National Association, and of course Dr. Dorota Wehman, consultant sociologist at Forte Inc. To an understanding and expectation about evening will flow. Today I introduce to you the topic and each panelist will make a three to five minute presentation on the given subtopic of today's overall topic. And then I will allow the panelists to interact with each other by asking some questions and then of course my favorite part where we open up the floor so we can expect questions and comments from you. So I want you to start to prepare your thoughts, prepare your questions in the early and of course we will then allow the panelists to bring their window on what should be a successful panel discussion with their closing remarks. So without further ado, before we start, I just wanted to remind you, we want to apologize to the late start, but there was a PTA leaving this room and therefore that was a situation beyond our control, but we are ready to go. So first panelist Pastor Paul Leacock will speak to God's blueprint for sexuality. Pastor Paul Leacock.
Thank you Brother Corey. If I may even modify what I'm speaking on slightly, I would say that there is a God's blueprint of sexuality because sexuality is not some objective activity out there that God decided to make some recommendations on, but he is the creator of sexuality itself. And this is clearly represented in scripture. The Bible is clear in the book of Genesis, the book of beginnings, and it's good to start there because the genesis of anything will give you its revelation. And right there in the very first chapter, when God decided to make mankind after he had created a world that was totally appropriate for him, there was a divine decision. The scripture says in Genesis 1 and 26, and God said, "Let us make man in our image after our likeness." It goes on to say, "So God created man in his own image, in the image of God created he male and female, he created them." God decided that they will be human beings and he decided how those human beings will be made. He designed them after himself in his own image. The person who designs a pen, a desk, camera, anything that we use does so intentionally and determines how whatever is made is to be used and to be, how it functions. The design belongs to the designer. Now we could always misuse anything, but the design is the designers. Secondly, not only was there a divine decision, so there was that divine design. He said he will be in our image, our likeness. Thirdly, there was not just a decision and a design, but thirdly, there was a destiny that God gave to humanity. Let them have dominion over fish, birds, animals, vegetation, the whole terrain, the entire earth was man to have rule and to exercise his rule over. So man had a purpose and destiny that was set. And that would have been impossible if God's decision and design did not, was not as it was because again he made them male and female. Which brings me to the fourth thing. He gave a divine docology or blessing. The Bible says, "And God blessed them, them who he decided to make, them who he had made in his own image, them who he had given to have dominion, he blessed them and listened to the blessing." Because you see, a blessing is not the new car, the new girlfriend, the new wife, the new set of money, that many times we associate with blessings as material things, but blessing has to do with that which is successive. What will prosper going forward is blessing. Because you see, success without succession is only failure in disguise. And God blessed them and said, "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the earth." That was God's desire. Think about it, whole earth, two people, and God said populate it. And that would only be possible through sexuality. That's why God made male and female. The man was made intentionally procreative and the woman was made reproductive. And so he even in Genesis 2 elaborates on that design so that we could understand. Were we not in this setting, it would be clear to describe that. But however, let me just say finally that when we look at chapter 2, we see clearly that God made the male and then from him he made the female and brought them together with this precedent. For this reason shall a young man leave his mother and father and cleave to his wife and the two shall become one flesh. God foreseeing that out of this man and this woman will proceed everyone else and he set the precedent that true sexuality of the male and the female will proceed prodigy, children, husband and wife. And so sexuality is within the providence, the providence of marriage between a man and a woman as set forth by God. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pastor Paul Leacock, God's blueprint of sexuality. We move now to Mr. Trevor Shepherd and he is going to present on the medical perspective on alternative sexuality. Please let us welcome his presentation right now. Before we start, we just want to remind people that some housekeeping, the bathrooms are at the...
Now what I'm going to do is drill a little deeper and try and look at what God actually did at the biological level when he said, when he made man, made them male and female. What does that mean? Because interestingly, very shortly after the garden scene, we get the Sodom scene and you might wonder, how did, what happened? What happened between God making Adam and Eve male and female and then the horror that erupted in Sodom? So let's look at the behind the scenes work that God was doing when he made Adam male. When he made Adam male, what God did at the biological level was that both, all living creatures are based on a genetic model. Everything that's alive has genes and those genes code for almost everything you are, you do, in addition to what we call nurture, your environmental factors and all the other cultural things. But at the basis of that, you're a set of genes. A male has 46 genes, a female has 46 genes, but in a male you've got 45 what we call autosomes or 22 pairs of genes that have to do with your body and then there's a pair, one pair that deals with your sexuality. In a male, that's X, one X gene and one Y gene. In a female, there are two X genes. Now it's amazing how much difference that single gene confers. Look at a male somewhere like Roger, you know, tall, dark and handsome, broad shoulders, big muscles. Sorry Rog. Look at a female, nice, curvy, lovely breasts and all the other things that men like to look at.
Veronica.
Veronica. That was...
Your excuse.
And that's only at the physical level, but then every cell in a male's body is male, every cell in a female's body is male. The thing that drives male brain activity is, are those genes and I can't go into all the, but the testosterone that goes along with it. So when a man looks at a woman, what happens inside his brain box is triggered by his genetic makeup. I am not sure what happens when a female looks at a male, I would have to defer that to somebody else, but I presume similar things happen. And so a normal male has his normal complement of genes. The amazing thing is that after the fall, not only did Adam and Eve get kicked out of the garden, but tremendous things happened even at the genetic level, at the cellular level, things went wrong. We now know that there are a number, I would like perhaps maybe one of the, maybe Brother Leacock or some of the other ministers to, if they can tell us later on, what are eunuch, are eunuch as mentioned in Bible really was? I'm not sure. But from the earliest times, there've been genetic aberrations, genetic abnormalities in the human genome family. And so you've got babies being born with 47 chromosomes. Normal male is 46, normal female is 46. Some people are born with 47 chromosomes. The way you examine them, what you find is they've got X, X, Y. They've got an extra X gene, a chromosome, sorry. You've got some who are born with 47 chromosomes and when you look, they've got an X, they've got three Xs, X, X, X. There's some 47 chromosomes, X, Y, Y. There's some who are, so these three, that group that I just mentioned, they've got an extra chromosome. They've got a set who've got a chromosome missing, so they've got 45 chromosomes instead of 46. They may have 46, 45 and the extra one, they've got an X, but the Y is missing. And so we call them various names which I probably won't bore you with, but the interesting thing is that these sexual aberrations or genetic abnormalities, they survive. If you saw a 47 XXY, it looks like a normal male. They're usually very tall, they will usually have a normally formed penis, a very small number may be able to even father children, but the vast majority are sterile. As a matter of fact, that's how you usually pick them up. They will come to the hospital or go to clinic, whatever. I've got a wife, I've got a girlfriend, we can't get pregnant, what's going on? You do, you do a number of studies, when you look at the chromosomes, he is what we call a Kleinfelter syndrome. Looks like a male, but is not a normal 46 XY. Then you've got the females, now the 45 X, that's the, these are the ones who are missing the Y chromosome, the extra X chromosome. These are females, normal looking female, they will look a little odd. They're usually shorter than normal, they've got a funny thing in the neck which you recognize as not quite normal looking, but they're sterile. They do not produce children, they're infertile. And then you've got even weirder situations, what we call mosaics, where in some cells there, you might find a male pattern, 46 XY, other cells in the body are 46 XX. These are hermaphrodites, they've got a mixture of both what looks like normal male cells and normal female cells. They may even have part testis and part ovary in their body. So what has happened over time because of genetic mistakes and the effects of, I suppose, the fall and sin, is that the whole genome has become disturbed and so we can, we are producing a large, not a large, but a relatively significant number of individuals with disordered and abnormal genes. Now what is interesting however, is that the majority of homosexuals do not exhibit these abnormal patterns. The majority of homosexuals, if you, when you examine the genome, what we call the genome, you will find 46 XY, in other words, a normal male, when, not normal, a male or female. I'm going to stop there for the moment because my time is gone. So I just wanted to say that part of the historical basis for alternative sexuality may, and I put that may in big brackets, may have a basis in genetics, but so far standard conventional medical thinking would say that we do not yet, we have not yet found a basis, a reason, a medical cause for homosexuality or lesbianism or transvestism or transsexualism. So far the specific cause eludes research, but it is true that we have a number of genetic problems in the human family.
Let's thank Mr. Trevor Shepherd. And he presented a medical perspective on alternative sexuality. We move now to Pastor Dale Brachet and he's going to look at the anus, part of the digestive system and not a sex organ. Let's welcome Pastor Dale Brachet.
Well, good evening, grace and peace be unto you. The word of the Lord says in Matthew chapter 15, verse 16 to 17, says, "Jesus said, 'Are you also still without understanding? Do you not yet understand that whatever enters the mouth goes into the stomach and is eliminated?'" When you look at the word stomach or belly, it talks about the abdomen cavity and as you do a little bit more research, you begin to see that human digestion is mouth and is completed by the anus. And when you add in a little bit more studies, you see that for example, the anus itself is just about an inch long and the rest is colon. When we attempt to go there, measurements in the research I've done, the average male erected penis is six inches, please don't look, don't look wrong to remember anything, but average. And with that being the case, once you penetrate the anus, five goes into the colon. The relationship now between that entry, you find that there is the internal and the external sphincter and you can find several sphincters around the human body. Case in point, sometimes we have things called like the esophageal reflux, when you're stressed, you eat wrong, spicy foods and so forth, you find that there is, you feel something like running backward. So in the anus, what happens is that one closes or stops things from coming out and then when it starts to come out, there's another opening up. So these two sphincters help us to keep alive from a coaching perspective, which I am certified, you find that if an individual for example throws up or have diarrhea before a meet, he or she, their times will not be as fast as before because issues such as electrolytes are gone. So what these sphincter muscles they do, they protect us from what we would call anal incontinence whereby you, sometimes you're laughing and there's a leak. You go to have this flatulent moment or fart and then there's feces. So God deliberately made us to manage self. So when we look at who we are, you find that like what Mr. Trevor Shepherd said, one gay activist, Camille Paglia, a lesbian activist, has said or has had the courage to boldly state that most homosexual refuse to admit homosexuality is not normal. On the contrary, it is a challenge to the norm. Nature exists whether academics like it or not and in nature procreation is the single relentless rule that is the norm. Our sexual bodies were designed for reproduction. No one is born gay. The idea is ridiculous. Homosexuality is an adaptation, not an inborn trait. So homosexual activists of course claim that their behavior is normal and that's why the American Psychology or Psychiatric Association removed homosexuality as a gender identity disorder in 1973. When we look at the power of the human anus and/or the gut, you find that it is the station of human health. Hippocrates said, as is normally known, the father of medicine, that the quality gut function that you have determines the health that you will exhibit at any time. So once we start playing around the gut, we end up in trouble. In this country, for example, having been trained in HIV and AIDS for a while, you find that there is something which they call lube, which is the greasing of the anus for the penetration of a digit. Listen, from the time you go to the anus for digital penetration, generally a penis, what happens is that the body assumes digestion. When a lady can't take tablets during impregnation, one of the things that happens, you have what we call a suppository. So the body in the digestive villi in the colon, you find is absorbed, is going to absorb. Another thing that happens is that when you and I miss the moments of defecation, your body pulls the feces back, extracts water. When it's extracting water, when you try to stool again, you get the issue now of longitudinal or traversed fissures and you may even, when you wipe, see some blood. So the anus, the large intestines is digestive. Now, one of the things that we do know is that when we have what is traditionally known as a fart, there's a reason behind that because green leafy vegetables are also digested in this area or are worked on in this area. The methane gas and carbohydrates and so forth gives the feces and this thing its smell. In addition, the human large intestines is very important to us because the synthesizing of vitamin K and B vitamins have their, a strong function in that area. So when, when we look at it, if vitamin K is lacking, you can clot, when you get cut. In the scripture, the Bible puts it that God said to his children, circumcise each child on the eighth day. Why? Because this particular vitamin and height operates, it causes clotting and it was for the baby on the highest, the highest amount that the baby wouldn't die. Second, the whole issue of the vitamins and having had a few accidents myself and couldn't take painkillers and so forth, there is no something called bevidoxine, which is a mixture of B vitamins that helps with pain. So if we start to do digital penetration, maybe a dildo or a penis, we are actually causing the human life cycle from what I think of research or I thought of research as well, to come down. So the gut is very, very important to the human existence. In closing, the vagina when compared with the anus, let me tell you something, there ain't no match. You get what I mean? The anus for example, the lubrication is primarily for ejection, for things coming out, which is water. With the vagina, the lubrication, that estrogen and so forth, how many people here are married besides me? How many people here are married besides me? Let me tell you something, thank you. The doctor did correct with you, good lucks. One of the things is this, that the vagina is self-lubricating. The anus does not have that. There are a number then of bacteria in all the orifices of the human, the holes, that are designed to keep where they are at. Once you start shifting and moving, you're gonna have some serious problems. So, for example, some of us, like myself, you may not put enough toilet paper in the toilet, you go and stool in and have a straight dive, splash, flush. Why we don't get sick, generally speaking? Because the bacteria takes care of it. Maybe God knew we would have had water toilets, so he built things in a particular way to protect us. Tell me of God in a box. So we go back to the first case scenario. Food for the belly, penis for the vagina, not the anus. I thank you at this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, Pastor Dale Bruffy, speaking on the anus, part of the digestive system, and not a sex organ. So we move now to Mr. Sean Gibbs, and he will talk about the role of the parents in protecting their children from premature sexual activity. Let's welcome Mr.
Good night, moderator, fellow panelists, audience, ladies and gentlemen. I would start by saying, as the good book say, train up a child in the way that he should go, and he should not depart from those ways. And we as parents, we are upfront in the race, but as our children grow, we start to like. the relationship that we desire for our children is what they come into this earth being aware of. But by way of education outside, or unintended, even at home, by way of television, internet, newspaper, magazines, they are introduced primarily to secondhand information. So we as parents need to come back to that powerful point of influence and recognize that we have that primary role as first teachers. And what do you want to teach your children? A lot of studies would have shown that the first time that children heard of sex was definitely not from their parents. And there's still the raging debate among parents as to when is the right age. But I'm very well aware that within the education circles, most teachers would tell you that children in reception can have a discussion on sex. So if we're gonna be impactful on influencing our children from premature sex and alternative relationships, we must first confront the issue of sex and have that discussion. And we as parents must be equipped to have that age appropriate discussion. We are not gonna get away from a society of hypersexuality that informs ultimately the alternative relationship. So parents, how do you influence your children? First, in the demonstration of our relationships. Too many times, we encountered persons who have opted for alternative relationships, and they blame it on the very family relationships that they would have seen. The way how mommy treated daddy, I don't wanna see a man. The way how mommy treated daddy, I don't wanna see a woman. And we have that power of influence by way of experience that if we make our marriages, our family life, that preferred choice, and the only relationship that creates, that designs and guarantees procreation that nowadays even persons with alternative views want to claim. And I would dare say, if you forfeit the relationships that guarantee your procreation, you cannot expect the results in another relationship. So we go back to our demonstration in our relationships with one another in homes, where your children see. And when they see that wholesome relationship, that relationships that bring joy to them, that is a serious point of influence. And get into the business, and it's never too early. The good book say, teach them as you walk, as you lie down on the streets. And we are missing major teaching points with our children when we see alternative relationships, and we turn a blind eye to them. We are missing powerful points of influence. We allow by way of external influence, all types of movies flow into our house via cable and direct. And I want you to recognize families that modern day comedies and movies are promoting the alternative forms of families. So in our subliminal, they're informing our sexuality, hence our relationships. All of us in here, and I look around, I can see the age group, but one, we grew up with comedies such as Family Ties, and it is enough, that there was always a mother and a father and children. Now we got the Big Bang theories and the other stuff, that the semblance of family is long gone. But you recognize that you can't get your children to take their eyes off those movies. So they are learning, they're being taught what we don't want them to teach, but our demonstration within the home is not enough to counter these perceived alternative forms of relationships. And we must be concerned as to what is beaming to our homes. And parents, I invite you to sit and watch some of these television programs with your children, and determine based on your value systems if they're gonna show in your house. Or at least have a discussion with them on what is being portrayed in those movies, in those programs. And this is where we can definitely influence. And I know many parents have tried, and most have been successful. And there's some that will still go the other way, but at least you would have taken advantage of your primary point of influence. Firstly, in your demonstration, in your coaching, by taking advantage of those teaching points, but also safeguarding your children from those external influences. And we can't leave it to the radio station or the television stations because their agenda is not yours. Their agenda is not about sexuality and family. Their agenda is about making money. And we know that the most attractive things, unfortunately, are the things that are really not too wholesome. So you have to create that space, you have to create that place where most important, that your demonstration and your relationship, what you expose daily with your spouse, is encouraging, and is one that your children would want to follow because they recognize that there can't be nothing better than this. I still see the glee in many persons' faces when they celebrate the longevity of the relationships of their parents. Recently, I was somewhere and a couple was celebrating forty-nine years of marriage, and the event stopped because it seems like, wow, it's a wow for everyone. But we have the opportunity to influence our children by those types of demonstrations. We have the opportunities to teach our children daily, every time you have an opportunity, take advantage of those teaching points, not just to tell them what to do, but to steer them away from what they shouldn't do. Because very often, we are quick to say, do that, because it's right. But we don't stop to say, don't do that, because it is wrong. And this is where parents as teacher have that very important role of influencer as the first teachers, but I want to say in demonstration. You'll be the first witness that would make your child desire to pursue a similar relationship to yours. And guard their thoughts, guard their experiences by constantly teaching them what you know is right. And encourage them to see the goal in mind. And if you want our spring, it can only be had in the context of what we know as God designed for relationship.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Sean Gibbs, presenting on the role of parents in protecting their children from premature sexual activity. We now move on to the final panelist, Dr. Veronica Evelyne, and she is looking at the social and emotional outcomes of alternative sexualities. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Dr. Veronica Evelyne.
As Paul said earlier, that alternative sexuality was any kind of sexuality outside of God's blueprint. And God's blueprint is not limited to heterosexuality, is not just male and female. It also includes what has become the norm in Barbados. I call them the sanitized sins. Fornication, adultery, sex before marriage, sex out of marriage, sex with a whole lot of folk. Now, in Barbados, we project a cultural approach to sexuality that boils down to two things, sex for pleasure and sex for profit. And so we are a hyper-sexed society. And when you look at society itself, you consider the kinds of problems we have. Many of them hinge on one thing, and that is our inability to manage our own sexuality. So that you look at something, for example, like the concept of family life. We so often do not say mother and father. I worked in the welfare department, so I might be a little skewed in what I'm saying. But we have child mothers and child fathers that says something about our culture. Years from now, when somebody is doing some kind of forensic linguistics, and they see the terms child mother and child father, it says something to them. We have children, we have all sorts of family structures which we accept as normal. We inherited them from slavery, and we have built on them, and we accept them, we justify them. Another problem, fatherlessness. If you were to go to DODs, you would find out that many of those prisoners grew up without fathers. And a lot of studies would show you that children need a mom and a dad. They don't need two people raising them, they need a male and a female. Now, this is the ideal, it's not always possible, but God does not make mistakes, and His design for the family is male, female, and children. So you have a whole lot of fatherlessness. We have a whole lot of intergenerational poverty. The government has just borrowed like ten million dollars from the IDB to deal with, among other things, the whole question of intergenerational poverty. You have households with nineteen people in it, twenty people, grandmother, mother and children, sister and children, cousin, auntie, children. You know, just from one generation to the other, welfare to welfare to welfare. Then the whole problem of divorce, and the divorce that comes via adultery, or because of bisexuality, or because of porn addiction, or simply because of appetite. You know, I did some research with men, lots and lots of men in the manufacturing sector, and they tell you, you know, we developed a concept. We call it faithful infidelity. And the men would say, if I have wifey and one other woman, that's okay. It's when you go about having more than one, can you imagine? So our whole concept of family is toxic. Then there's a problem of unwanted pregnancy and abortion, I won't go into statistics. The problem of human trafficking, of commercial sex, of sex for favors, and let me say here, when we talk about commercial sex and sex for favors, we're really talking the same thing, but in one way, we're looking at the middle class, and in the other, we're looking at the ghetto people. So that somebody will have sex to get money to go off to Miami for a weekend spree. Another person might go at drill hall to get money to pay their children to buy a uniform for their child. So, in any case, it is sex for profit. Then there's a whole question of child sexual abuse, and of course HIV/AIDS and STIs. Now, what does all of this boil down to? It boils down to the economy. And we have a big, big problem with our economy, and we will talk about that after. Now, in terms of the emotional problems, we have to understand the human being and how human beings are made. We love things, here now, convenient, fun, pleasure. And that's what sex is. The other thing is money, but we ain't in money today, we talk in sex. And so, when the whole society, if we understand how behavior is, values are caught, so that when the whole society enables sexual behavior, you have persons very young, now they say nine years is the age of debut for many of our children. And so, you have a cycle beginning, and the mismanagement of sexuality, and then the problems, and then the impact on our economy with absenteeism from work and so on. And the emotional problems, now there's something called cognitive dissonance. It simply is when what you believe and how you behave don't click. So that somebody goes into same-sex relationships, in their consciences, they know that something is wrong with it, but they stifle their conscience, and so it manifests sometimes as depression, and then depression gets bigger, it becomes suicidal attempts, and all of that. So there is a big emotional problem as well, and this too impacts on labor days. The days that you have to stay home because you're sick, you can't go to work, you're depressed, et cetera. I'm gonna stop there. I think we have given enough food for thought, and I'll hand back over to the moderator. Thank you.
Good evening. Now, at this stage here on the program, it's supposed to go to the panelists to see if they have any burning questions for each other, but because of the lateness of the night, unless they have burning questions, we wanna go to you. We wanna open it up to you for your questions to the panel. Now, again, because of the lateness of the hour, you know, sometimes people like to stand and make their own presentation. We will not be allowing that tonight, you can come back tomorrow. Same place, right here, we will entertain it then. But for tonight, I want you to answer your pointed question to the particular panelists, depending on their area, or whoever feels most comfortable can jump in and answer the question for you. So, who will be first? Now, I'm gonna warn y'all, usually what happens coming on to the end, everybody's there, but they might get in your question early because that closing time is gonna be closing time. So, let's go.
Good evening. My question is specifically directed toward Pastor Dale. You did make mention of the physical disadvantages of the homosexual male. What are there, if any, physical disadvantages of the homosexual female?
Good question. That's a good question, and you've earned your PhD. One of the things is that what my studies have led me to, and almost every place I go, I continue to hear this question, is that, let's start on the practical level, the issue of the use of the dildo. In the operation of sexual intercourse, the male penis, the head, is very sensitive. And if you say you love your wife, you'll be sensitive upon entry into the vagina, and you can tell when something is happening to her or discomfort. When you have on this rubber, that has no feelings. So you can do major pieces of damage to the womb. In addition, you find that sometimes in female homosexual relations, there is the condition where some females are not necessarily seemingly loyal to lesbianism. So they have a man today, and tomorrow, they go with somebody else, a female. And what they've shown is that with the ejaculation into the womb or the vagina, sometimes it can leak back over your neck there into your apparent lover. So, that is one. The other thing is that the, how some of the practices inside of lesbianism goes, there is friction. And you can mash up the clitoris, you can mash up the vagina and so forth. Some people use objects- Some people use objects, these fingernails can scratch along the vaginal wall. These things exist in the female relationship. And then, one of the things that research has shown, and when I use the word research, this is what I've read, over five hundred books for five years, and every day, is that you find the fingernails scratching, and then like in the male-female relationship, when you're dealing with the issue of points, I slept with so many and so many women. Likewise, the female element still continues with that. It also brings, like in some of the slavery situations, a sense of humbling, a sense of mastering over, where these people keep you in a certain kind of bondage. So sometimes there's the issue of licks like peas in the Barbadian saint. People fight there, you know, and I dare you go with somebody else. I am a hundred percent male, my wife and daughter, they were just here. But I was in a particular setting where apparently an alleged lesbian was there. I was with this extremely beautiful girl who was not my wife, we were just talking. And when this individual entered the room, this person in the Barbadian vernacular took off and ran. So it is things like these that you see in it. And then there are other diseases that come along with it. Case in point, when a man is with his wife, the penis and the vagina, they know each other, the body fluids. But once you start going out, that cross-contamination creates a problem. And even so, with lesbianism.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions at this time? You can start and make your way to the microphone, raise your hand, just go straight to the microphone. And we can start to form the line there if necessary.
Hi, hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening, my name is Rohan Mohammed, and I'm the co-founder of Barbados Gay Lesbians and All Sexuals Against Discrimination. I came in late, so I wasn't able to hear the entire panel. But I do have a question with regards to the church's responsibility when it comes to promoting harmful messages. So I think a lot of the messages that the evangelical church puts out, it's not necessarily an advocating of violence or homophobia towards the community, but I think it creates an atmosphere for people to do so. So we get a lot of, you know, anti-homosexual messaging. And I don't hear a lot of messaging from the church that is in condemnation of the violence towards the community, that is in condemnation towards parents putting out their children because they're gay, you know, people murdering trans people, you know, correctional rape that lesbians and women who have sex with women go through. And I think that's troubling. And I think because the church has so much power, that it definitely has a responsibility to condemn those things. But when we hear the church speak about the community, it's usually in a very damning and denigrating way. And that creates an atmosphere of permission for people to feel free, like they can go ahead and come with, you know, messages of violence and really volatile energies towards the community. So I want to know, what is your position in condemning certain behaviors? Also, I am a woman who has sex with women, I've had a lot of sex with women. And what you said just now, it was really erroneous. I mean, it just, you know, it was really just very off. So I think when you go across like that, you're not somebody who has sex with women as a woman. So I think a lot of the messaging that you're putting across is, you know, non-factual. And I'm wondering if you got this information from women who have sex with women? Because I've lived the experience, and some of what you're saying, I'm like, okay, that doesn't make sense. You speak to promiscuity, and that's not something that's necessarily, you know, specific to the community. You know, women who have sex with women actually have a higher rate of pleasurable sex than heterosexuals do. And also, I think as parents, you know, Dr Evelyn, you have a daughter who's a lesbian, so I don't think you're necessarily in a position to be putting across these harmful messages, and I just think it's really dangerous.
Let us pause here, what I want to do is I want to, because we're going on to the third point. I want to break your questions into three. So in relation to the question, I wanted to let Pastor Paul Leacock answer that question. And the charge basically is, you have a church led by God, led by Jesus Christ, who's supposed to be embracing, embracing the sinner if not the sin. But the charge is that it is not doing so. And we want to deal with that first charge. And then we're gonna go on to the sexual pleasure between females, and then we'll look at any other that is in relation to the danger of alternative sexuality here. So just let us take a pain here.
No, I'm done, that was it.
Alright, thank you very much, thank you. I'm gonna need you for part two though, don't go too far, but you could go and have a seat.
I'm sorry, say your name again, ma'am?
My name is Rohan Mohammed.
Rohan Mohammed.
I think that it is pretty disingenuous to assume that the condemnation of homosexuality by the church creates a climate of violence against homosexuals. I do not, I think that you're gonna have some significant trouble drawing a correlation between those two entities, especially here in Barbados. Because although we may have the most draconian laws against homosexuality out of all of the Caribbean countries, you do not see any strong climate of violence despite our very strong Judea-Christian ethic in Barbados. We have a very strong Judea-Christian ethic, and you do not see the perpetration of violence. If that was the case, then the stronger the church, where is, you should see the spike in violence. And you can, I would challenge you on that, especially you talk about your personal experience. We, our church is in town, and we see that. But let me go on to the more, bigger, the bigger issue. The church condemns all sin, all sin, all. The fact that the church speaks about, for example, fornication, and it speaks against fornication and adultery more than homosexuality. And there is no climate of violence against premarital sex or extramarital sex. So if we are to accept your premise that condemning the particular sin of homosexuality creates a climate of violence, then we have to wonder, well, what's happening with those condemnations against premarital sex or adultery? How come that there is absolutely no one complaining that because the church has condemned this, look at what is happening to me? All sin is condemned by the church, including murder, including violence. It doesn't matter who it is against. The Bible does not say thou shall not kill a particular person. It says you shouldn't murder anybody. And God takes very, very strong condemnation of any murder or any violence against a person. And the church condemns all sin, be it perpetrated against a homosexual or a child, a man, a woman, anyone. And I am sure that there are plenty of examples of where the church has stood up against wrong. We always say this in our language, we hate the sin, but love the sinner.
Rohan, can I ask you to return to the microphone, please, please? I want to just, and I guess this is my role as moderating the discussion. In terms of the point that he made in relation to violence, are you seeing that type of violence against persons with alternative sexuality, particularly in Barbados?
Yeah, well, first of all, I don't think being quite a part of the community should be referred to as alternative, because it's just who I am. But secondly, there is, you know, I run an organization which focuses on the community and the dangers and ills that face the community. And I don't think you not being a part of that community wouldn't really be in a position to see all of the vulnerable people, vulnerable people and the things that they go through. So on a weekly basis, sometimes our organization will receive incoming messages from people as young as thirteen years old who have been assaulted, you know, having rocks thrown at them just when they're trying to walk down their gap to catch a bus. You know, the guys on the block throw rocks at them, people break into houses. I've had my apartment broken into, and somebody wrote me a note saying, you know, I need to burn in hell because I'm a wicker. You know, and there are dozens and dozens and dozens of stories. But because we live in an atmosphere where it's so volatile against the community, people don't report these things to authorities. So people who are not part of the community won't know these things. But to say that there is not an atmosphere of violence towards these people, I think that's really dismissive, and it's reductive of the amount of oppression that the community goes through. Secondly, you were saying just now, I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh, but you were saying just now that, you know, these things don't happen. And I think that's a major problem with the relationship between the church and the community. Because when you completely ignore these statistics and ignore these facts, it doesn't create any sort of room for growth and any sort of room for things to be rectified. We're saying that these are problems that we face. And you're saying that people, you know, you advocate against all sorts of sins. But people aren't being harmed for fornicating, there are things that are accepted by society. People aren't being killed or murdered or beat up for being, you know, for having premarital sex or other sins. And I think LGBT people specifically are very vulnerable to violence and very vulnerable to certain forms of oppression.
I want you to clarify what I see as a contradiction. And there's not, you're saying that they're not being reported, but then you're saying that society ignoring the facts and the statistics. But if it's not reported, how would, I guess that may be, that may explain the ignorance.
I think people know, and to say it, you know...
I certainly didn't know, I learned it the first time.
Okay, well, I'm saying no. And the thing is, people don't like to be visible, because you put yourself at a risk.
A greater risk, yeah.
You know, to face a lot of discrimination. But a lot of the time, when you hear people advocating against homosexual, what do they say, fire and brimstone, they bring up Leviticus, they bring up a lot of things.
And on that point, I want to ask Dr Husbands, probably Ambrose, Pastor Paul, or even, I see Dr Veronica has the mic, but also Pastor Dale Brachet. The, one of the things you would have asked, what message is the church putting out there to persons like parents who are putting out children because they're gay and those sort of things? Is the church spreading a welcoming message, you know, take those children, give them a hug, love them? Or are there alternative messages that are being spread? So I want to ask that part of the question on behalf of the audience. So who wants to take that one first? Dr Husbands comes to the rescue.
Yeah, I have no evidence that the church treats their children who have those tendencies, those alternative tendencies any differently to a child who may be rebellious against the parent. So for me, from my own context, I do not see that. A matter of fact, we are seeing, and I'm addressing the chairman, we are seeing that, we are seeing that...
We can do this respectfully, yeah?
We are seeing that church people have been able to decipher that if there's a problem in the family, they see it as a problem in the family, whether it is an alternative like sex preference, whether it is theft, whether it is vagabondism, crime, or anything. So from my perspective personally, I don't see any different treatment.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay.
Yes, I would like to say that the church has a responsibility, has two responsibilities. One responsibility is to take no part of anyone's sins. The second responsibility is to love everyone despite their sin, because we are all sinners. We only sin in different ways. Now, I agree with everything that Pastor Paul says. I believe that the church, there is room for growth. For example, and the room for growth comes because of how this whole conversation was framed, and it was framed by the LGBT community in that the church is targeted as the problem. We are haters. If we speak about fornication or substance abuse or anything, we are not, a substance abuser will not call you a hater. But a person from the LGBT community will use that kind of toxic language. And so, we have to be very, very careful because of how it is framed. As a church though, I think we do have a responsibility to make things unequivocally clear. And there can be, there is room for teaching. For example, this whole matter of discrimination. We say discrimination, now I did some research for the NHAC two years ago, and it was about stigma and discrimination and HIV/AIDS and so on. And one of the things we found was that the elderly are discriminated against, children are discriminated against, women are discriminated against. People have problems because people are not kind. However, it is the LGBT community that somehow has isolated itself and its problems and has magnified it as if this is the only community that has, that is being mistreated. Now, it has to be attended to, because there are some things that we Christians do, and we have to ask ourselves and really work through it, is this discrimination or is this discretion? I know for a fact that if a member of the LGBT community went for a job and did not get it solely on the basis of their sexual orientation, I would march. If they were, if they had something, you know, if they were denied a house or so on. So we have to be very mature in this, and it's very easy to get volatile. And that is a trap that we must not get into. When we hear words like hater and bigotry and violence, when we get blows below the belt and so on, this is the approach that has been fostered, it is how it has been framed. And as a church, we have to rise above that, be much more mature, and just deal with the facts, deal with the truth, deal with love. Because that is what the God that we have wants of us. And the second thing I want to say, and then I'll shut up, is that when we talk church, we have to be careful what we're talking about. There is the church as an organization, which is the building and the people and the activities and so on. And then there is the church as an organism, which is the people who really know and love their God and live according to the precepts of their God. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is Ambrose Carter, I recognize you, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening to the panel. As was said, my name is Ambrose Carter. I want to bring something to the table though. In respect of my LGBT brethren here, and we want to say that we love you. For those of you that do not know me, I'm from the Pure Sex Center, and it is not about here. And you see, both sides have to move from their positions closer to each other. So we need to come together, both of us, it can be on one side and not the other. But what I want to put on the table though is that we at the Pure Sex Center, we promote purity. And the reason why I am bringing up this is because when we speak about discrimination, it is easy for one group to think they're being discriminated because the other group is not speaking. Now, we have young children in this society, at schools all across the nation, professing purity. And because they are professing and promising purity, violence is perpetrated against them. This is something that is not being spoken about in this society. It is not heard. When individuals stand and say, I want to wait until, to remain a virgin until I am married in schools across this country, bullying is exhibited against them. You don't hear us crying out about that. And it is not, and let me say this again, I grew up in a community with homosexuals. They are my friends, we grew up together. And oftentimes, you will be moving in a group together, and not Christians, individuals in the community would have something, and violence may be perpetrated against individuals, not necessarily by Christians. We must stop the nonsense of saying that it is Christians against homosexuals. We need to stop that in this society. Yes, we have different points of view and different, we have difference of opinion in Barbados, and we are hurting this country when we stand and say these things and get these lies out into the international world. These things are not true. I grew up, and every day on my way to school, we passed a house that was laden with homosexuals. We spoke and we went on. We lived in peace in that community. And I would like to encourage my homosexuals, lesbians, and gay brothers to sit with us at the Pure Sex Center.
Alright, thank you very much.
We want to invite you to sit with us, let's, you know, let's come together and talk and understand each other's point of view because we need to live together in peace and harmony in this society.
If you are serious about that, I encourage you to exchange contact information with Rohan Mohammedian, and make it happen. Thank you very much, Mr. Ambrose Carter.
You're welcome.
Make it happen. Go ahead. I can let you go, and then the next person in the audience. Go ahead.
With reference to that which came to me, one of the things we look at, it was alluded to that I don't have the evidence. In addition, because of your law of specificity that you have done so with maybe whatever women, that is not necessarily all of Barbados. Second, one of the things that we're looking at here is that there is something called the Kingdom of God. And God created mankind to function in a particular way. One of the things that we see in scripture is this. It says in 1 Corinthians, chapter 11, verse 9, "Nor was man created for the woman, but woman for the man." And then in 1 Timothy, chapter 2, verse 13, "For Adam was formed first, and then Eve." In 1 Corinthians, chapter 7, verse 39, says, "A wife is born by law as long as her husband lives. But if the husband dies, she is at liberty to be married to whom she wishes only in the Lord." When we look at it, in Leviticus, chapter 20, verse 13, it says, "If a man lies with a male as he lies with a woman, both of them have committed an abomination. They shall surely be put to death. Their blood shall be upon them." That was. But then again, we see now in Romans, chapter 1, verse 18 to 32, it says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men, who suppress the truth in unrighteousness, because what may be known of God is manifest in them. For God has shown it to them, for since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made, even his eternal power on Godhead, so that there is no excuse." Then we go on a little further. It says, "For this reason God gave them up to vile passions, for even their women exchanged their natural use for what is against nature. Likewise, also men leaving the natural use of the woman, burning their lusts for one another, men with men committing what is shameful and receiving in themselves the penalty of their error which was due." So when we look at this, the issue of natural comes from a word which talks about growth by germination, and it points back to the issue of a lineal descent, a father and a mother. The woman and the man were made for each other to put forward a generation. Now, a question that I have in my mind after researching from 2003 till current, if male homosexuality and female homosexuality is so apparently good, if we don't reproduce, where are you gonna get new anus from? If we don't reproduce, where are you gonna get new vagina from? Let's go a little further. One of the things the Bible also puts in Romans, chapter 1, it says, "The recompense of their error." And this talks about an action that I carried out in the past, which knows something is gonna happen to me down the road. When we look at the use of the human anus, for example, the anus has a lot of blood vessels down at the end. And it is one of the easiest ways to insert any sexually transmitted infection and disease into the human. Furthermore, when an infection hits the human through the anus, it takes a little while. But then we get a big cellular fight. The white blood cells start to fight, and the more they fight, especially with HIV, from the time it starts to fight and it throws back out these fighter T cells, it is also manufacturing HIV at the same time. And one of the other things that we see coming out of even the World Health Organization and stuff, is that because of our sexual habits, one of the things that is happening, the exchange of body fluids, we have new and reemerging diseases. And also diseases coming back with greater strength. So though I have a certain amount of pleasure in what I do, from a divine perspective, the Kingdom of God, he has put a prescription in there that man should lie with woman in marriage, and woman should not be lying with woman. And then by extension, looking to say we're marrying, a woman has eggs in her that needs to be fertilized. A man has sperm in him built every 72 hours that needs to be attached to these eggs to do the work. So when we look at these things, we see some stuff. As I close this little segment, Dr. Trevor asks the issue about the eunuch. The Bible says in the Gospels that you're born so or made themselves. So the eunuch has, as you would see medically, the lower sex drive, the human genome and genetic code is there. And then being made eunuchs by men, you find that there's a bobbin or genital amputation. So in this whole thing, we gotta come back to first case or first cause. It's not a human fight, but it is a God product, that we're saying God has the dimensions. God is the one who has taken responsibility for the existence of man. And he's saying this is how we want you to function.
Alright, thank you Pastor Dale Brachet for that replay. We're gonna go back over to the audience and get some more questions or commentary.
Stephen Barker, Sherram Evangelical Church. First thing, let me admit, from my 58 years being in church, that there was a time when Christian, when a particular Christian wanted to discriminate against a group of persons who were not Christians. And that is found when Jonah, in his infinite, we call bad wisdom, decided the best way to discriminate against anyone was to not tell them, "Doth save the Lord." Secondly, as far as we call threats of concern, I have up to now not seen a Christian couple who goes to a homosexual baker and demand that they bake a cake for their wedding and put them in prison or call them to be fined as people are fined in America. And last but not least, Christians have to take some blame because we sometimes like to use words that God did not give us to use. This word called alternative is really a replacement for the word rebellion. And we must be careful how we use words because one guy went to prison, he's a lawyer, not a plaintiff in courthouse, he was caught stealing. And now he said, he was stealing vegetables, he said, answer bad, he charged him for prejudiced arson. Because that sounded good. The master, you mean, he was charged for stealing. And like I said, we can encourage people by the way we use words. So I am going to say, the word is not alternative because there can be no alternative if God is the designer. And last but not least, a question now. Is it true that there are some places in the world where certain wars are given to some men who can no longer control their normal body function? And is it also true that the suicide rate among these homosexuals is higher than among ordinary people?
Alright, good questions. Who wanna take those?
I'm not sure I'm gonna take them, but the answer will come out, what I'm saying. Last night, Dr. Okafor spoke about think consequence. And I would like to add to that, understand the context. So very briefly, let me talk about the context of LGBT in this world as it is, and why the Christian church is being targeted. Here you have a group of persons, now fornicators, adulterers, liars, murderers, all of us, all sinners. You do not have any group of sinners who are funded heavily by international agencies. You do not have a group of sinners who go out with a placard and say, "I always chat too much," or "I lie," or "I steal." You do not have groups of sinners who call persons who speak of their sin, you do not call them haters. Everybody else seems able to separate between the sin and the sinner. But we must understand that this is a plot. This is something that was not, it's not natural. There is a spiritual understanding which we will not understand except our eyes be opened. And our eyes will not be opened if we decide to keep them shut. There is none so blind as he that cannot see. Now, that will not see. The other thing is that we have to respect choice. Now, if a person chooses to be homosexual, that's their business. They choose everything that comes with being homosexual in a world where people understand that it is only natural for a male and a female to get together because even batteries operate with a negative and a positive. So that when a person puts themselves in a position to be noticed, you have to think consequence. However, we respect the choice. We understand and we love the person as a human being made in the image of God and who is not yet saved because many, I pray by name, Rohan, I pray for down the lion. I pray by name for homosexuals. And we love homosexuals. However, we hate the sin because God hates the sin. He loves the sinner, but he hates the sin. And we believe it or not. You choose whatever you want. We accept that choice. But we have a greater allegiance to God, who says, "Speak my word." And that's what we're here to do, speak the truth.
Alright, we go back to the audience. Yes, sir.
Good night. The rhetoric that's being spoken here today about love the sinner, hate the sin, I hear you very loud and I hear you very clearly, but apparently I'm not really seeing it. Because when Rohan spoke about her personal experiences and experiences of other homosexuals and lesbians who have gone through discrimination in this country, and then hearing the response saying, "That doesn't happen, that can't happen here." We don't see the violence, it's very dismissive towards her experiences and the experiences of others. She, if she runs, I just want to finish my point, please. If she runs an organization for many years, where she has spoken to many people who live by their orientation, not lifestyle or alternate living, but their orientation, and they experience these things, being kicked out, being homeless, happens here in Barbados because I have gay friends and I have gay family. And I have seen it for myself. I think it is very dismissive to believe the notion of loving the sinner. I hate him the same when the conversation clearly has not been happening, when there are a lot of rhetoric being spoken that is very opposite to that action. A question I also wanted to ask is because we're seeing here that it is not natural. And I'm also hearing from the panel a lot of research being done. So there are two things I would like to ask you. Also in research, they have been shown that there are several animals who also engage in homosexual living. Dolphins, monkeys, dogs, several different animals. And there are also animals during, after intercourse, they also switch genders. Right? This also happens. So is that not natural? And secondly, what I would like to ask is that since we're talking, since, sir, I remember you when I was a little boy, but I can't remember you now.
Uh, Dale.
Yes. Since we're talking about the anus and so forth, the G-spot in the mind is in the mind's anus. Can you please talk about that for a second so we can understand? If there's supposed to be sexual sensitivity around the human body, and that is found in the mind's anus, why all of a sudden, no, you haven't spoken about that? Thank you very much.
Don't move in there. The issue of the G-spot is actually the prostate gland. And the penis goes in the anus, and it stimulates that.
Right.
Right? In stimulating that, one of the things that will happen is that the onset of prostate cancer can also happen.
But what about ejaculation, though?
Pardon?
Wait, it can ejaculate.
Hold on a minute. One of the things is this, the power of ejaculation, when you're looking at a sperm bank, we're jerking off our masturbation. Right? If the individual is not sufficiently stimulated, they put their hand in there and touch that, and that is there. But when we're dealing now with, oh yes, when we're dealing with the issue of ejaculation, the internal and external sphincter carries the power of causing all of that apparatus to push sperm out. So that if the internal and external sphincter, they are damaged, the power of ejaculation goes through the door. So all those things come together in the male reproductive organs. So the G-spot, which I have right here in front of me, is the issue of the stimulation of the prostate gland.
But it's a sexual feeling that entices.
Good, and the sexual feeling that we go after is similar to the whole issue of first time drug abuse. That when you continue with this, you don't get back that first feeling, you go after it and go after it and go after it.
Can I ask you how you know about that?
How, you know about it?
Yeah.
From research?
Okay, so you.
Ten doctors living in Barbados proofread this.
Can I, research also be biased, though? I'm just saying. Because I'm not gonna sit here and say that I've never been homophobic in my life, right? I grew up with the rhetoric being told. But I've opened myself to understand, I have discussions and listen to people. Right? So I've realized that a lot of the research that I have done in my past when I was being homophobic was biased. So don't you think that your research could also have been biased?
At this time, the answer is no. Because I was willing, over that five-year period, that anything that I found that is in favor of the struggle or anyway from proper research, I'm willing to produce. And I've done such. One of the things you look at is the whole issue of exception to the rule. That I may say that this will happen. A person may say, "But I am so-and-so, and it has never happened." There's always that exception to the rule component. However, I'm suggesting to you that when we have these things, we're damaging the human. And that's not God's design for the human.
Can I also say one last thing to Dr. Evelyn? I don't think that the homosexual groups are the only people that are oppressed because it may seem that way, right? I'm not saying that's what you said, but that's what it sounded like. Because you have the Black Lives Matter movement. I have been racially discriminated in this country, and it was documented two weeks ago. Right? So racism also happens. We have placards saying, "I was racially discriminated against." Last year around the same time, women spoke up about sexual harassment, right? Life and Leggings was started. Discrimination happens to when people who are not in the position of power, right? Have the least power, and then they step up against the people who have power. Barbados, to my statistics, I remembered up until 2016, Barbados is 67% Christian. Therefore, the Christian denomination, the Christian religion, is still the most dominant religion. Therefore, they cannot feel the discrimination that others who feel that from the church will feel. I can't be sexist.
Yeah.
Right? Sorry, a woman cannot be sexist. A straight person cannot feel homophobia. Right?
I would.
And a white person cannot feel racism because they are the more powerful dominant positions.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Reaction and response.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just want to make a few points, for the medical perspective, when it comes to male, especially male homosexual practices. I think, and I don't want to gross anybody out, but if, there's a study done in 1948, the Kinsey Report. Interesting reading, you should read it. That was a fairly exhaustive study of male, and later on, 1953, female homosexuality, now sexuality. There was also the Masters and Johnson's Report. One of the things that homosexual groups will not tell you is one, how intense the promiscuity level among them is. We've already heard from the lady who spoke that she has had sex with several females. We've already heard from the lady who spoke that she has had sex with several females. Some of. Oh, you've had a lot of, sorry, I mis, I misrepresented you. I thought that's what you were saying. But it is commonly known that among the homosexual group, generally speaking, there is tremendous promiscuity. Some males will report having as many as 35 contacts in one night alone. And that was where the, the, the original HIV explosion occurred because of the tremendous amount of promiscuity that is there. That's number one. Number two. The, the mucosa of the anus is one cell layer thick. The mucosa of the, well, we don't call it mucosa, but the skin of the vagina is several layers thick. The vagina is obviously designed for the trauma of intercourse. The rectum is not. You can easily break that thin, delicate mucosa. Sometimes when a patient comes to the doctor, just putting your finger in to do a rectal exam or put an instrument to look at something, you get a little bit of blood because it's so delicate. The, even today, the rate of HIV among the homosexual group is, the, the incidence is higher than any other group because that activity is decidedly unhealthy. Thirdly, there are some practices, as you would read in the Masters and Johnson's report or the Kinsey report, that will, I don't know, frankly, I mean, when we, when the AIDS thing first broke and we had a special seminar to sensitize us medical people about it. Even we were a little agitated at some of the practices that occur. Coprophagia. Copro, stool, phagia to eat. It's a, it's a practice among homosexuals. Golden showers, well, you probably know what that means. People urinate on each other. Fisting, where you put a whole fist into the ass. There are so many harmful practices. And I think that, you know, you can, you can, you, the WHO and the World Health and these people, they, they are now saying homosexual is a normal, healthy lifestyle. When you examine the group as a whole, you will see that so much of what happens among this grouping is decidedly unhealthy by any norms. Now, I, I think that perhaps my colleagues here on the panel, they, they've tried very hard to sound, I suppose, conciliatory. But the point is, you know, and I think, I am a doctor, I am accustomed to speaking my mind very forthrightly, without pulling any punches. The lifestyle is not a healthy lifestyle. I have only dealt with the physical, the physical level. You go to the psychological level, the emotional level. There are so many issues there. Now, of course, some of those issues, issues exist among some of the other non-healthy promiscuity, men who have several partners as well, I mean, female partners. You have a lot of problems with them. Even in the Bible, you see problems with males who have a lot of wives. There's all the tensions that exist. God had a simple plan, one male, one female. And even there, you get problems. But at least those problems are within a context that you can manage.
Thank you very much. Doctor Trevor Shepherd. You go back to the, oh, sorry, sorry.
May, may I say that I find it very interesting that those who attack and criticize the church for it stand against homosexuality, have the habit, and I'm saying this to you as feedback to you, of changing the dialogue, changing what is said. For example, we never said that there's no discrimination against homosexuals. We never said that. The point was that the church's language is causing the violence against homosexuals. That was the point that Rohan made. And we are saying that there is, you, you, you do not offer or have not offered any evidence to that. We did not say at all that those functions are exist. But I want to read something to you. And this is the Apostle Paul, who lived in the Roman society, where homosexuality was far more rife than it is right now. It was very common for a Roman man, aristocrat and all, to be able to have his wife, to sleep with his servant girl, to sleep with his servant boys, to go down to the temple of Aphrodite or Diana or any other goddess, and to sleep with all of the women who were part and parcel of that cult without losing one stitch of status. It was common in Paul's day for there to be ketomites. That is, young boys who served men at dinner. And as they served them, they were indulged. They were, they were used sexually. I can quote, and I wish I had brought the document with me. I could quote statements, poems, songs from that period of time, where for example, it was desirable to have the boy before his pubic hairs set in. That was common in Paul's time. But listen to the church, sir, from the Apostle Paul, which we go by. Listen to him in 1 Corinthians, chapter six. He says, "Know you not that the unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God? Be not deceived, neither fornicators, nor adulterers, nor, nor idolaters, nor effeminate, nor abusers of themselves with mankind, nor thieves, nor covetous, nor drunkards, nor revelers, nor extortioners shall inherit the kingdom of God." All of them are put there. But listen, in verse 11, this is the critical one. "And such were some of you. But you are washed, you are sanctified, you are justified in the name of the Lord Jesus and by the Spirit of God." Rather than discriminating against homosexuals, our job is to win them and see them sanctified, purified, made holy in the sight of God, as he that says what is abominable to him. And let me say this without fear of contradiction. We say there's no little sin and big sin, darn true. God says what is little and big in his sight. Some things are sins, some things are iniquities, some things are wickedness, but some things are abominations to him. And let me say this finally. You cannot take your subjective experience and extrapolate it across the spectrum as though that is undisputed truth. Your subjective experience is just that, yours. We deal with objective truth. That's what comes from this. And we stand by this, objective truth. Finally, to assume that we are so ignorant that we don't know what we're saying because you are practicing something is nonsense. Because from a professional perspective, we who counsel, trained counselors, persons who engage all manner of people in this society, you will be surprised what we see and who come to us for assistance in all kinds of ways. So if you think that we are just sitting here as a bunch of ignorant people that live in the church and don't know what's in society, you are absolutely mistaken. We counsel people.
Are we going to hear from?
We hear their stories. And therefore, I can tell you, and I cannot say some things because I'm bound by confidentiality, that we see the horror and we see the carnage and we see the fallout from those who fall. Let me tell you, in front of my church, it doesn't happen so much now. On a Friday night, all of the Victoria's Secret brothers are present. And we engage them, we talk to them, and that we don't run them from even in front of the church. So your subjective experiences cannot extrapolate against the pool. And I caution you to think, not to think of us as ignorant because we know a lot more than you think we do.
It's just gone 22 minutes after nine. Remember, we're coming on to the end. We're going to hear from Dr. Veronica, then Dr. Trevor, then the audience, and then we're going to bring this home.
Okay, just a very quick point. I would like to dispel the myth that we were listening to earlier. And this is the whole question of tolerance and discrimination and so on. In research done by Cadres and that, we know where Cadres is. We, they do very, very good research, it's not biased. And they, and they have said that the level of tolerance towards the LGBT community has increased in Barbados. So there is no, yes, we can have anecdotal evidence that this happens and that happens. But the research shows, and research that I myself have done, has shown that that level of tolerance is increasing. Secondly, when we talk about the church as 67% in Barbados, that's going down. Because like I said, there is the church and the church. And right now, God has become very unpopular in Barbados. People are hostile towards God and they are hostile towards his children. Not his children within the church as an organization, but especially evangelical Christians and those who will live for him. You see, the truth pierces to the heart. But God loves. And because God loves, we must speak truth. And we must speak that truth that touches the heart. Now, it is choice. A person can choose to believe it or they can choose to reject it. And the Bible tells us that each time you reject it, your conscience becomes seared with a hot iron until you actually exchange the truth for a lie. But we will never stop speaking the truth. We stand on God's word.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
I want to actually say that I am quite impressed with these two young people. I mean, I would not have gone to a conference like this and admitted my sexuality in what I thought would be in a hostile environment. So I think that's a very brave move. But, yeah. But what I would like to, what I would like to, what I, what I would like to say, though, or rather to ask, it's not a direct question. But if I were homosexual, what I would be concerned about is, forget WHO, forget UNESCO, forget, what does God think about me? That's presuming I believe in God. Because if I read the Bible and I see that God says, "Thou shalt not." And who says? WHO says, "Oh, it's okay," and UNESCO says, "Okay." But God says, "Thou shalt not." I'd be very concerned. I'd be more concerned with that than what any other organization says. So my question to, to whoever here, you know, who may profess a homosexual lifestyle. One, do you believe in God? If you do, how do you marry God's statements with your life? How do you see that playing out in the future? If you believe in an eternal future? Because that's the important question.
All right, thank you. All right, we go back to the audience quick. We know Pastor Dea has something he wants to say as well, but let's keep it flowing. Cardi, again, I want you to be either sharp or give way to.
I just want to be very, very sharp for true. Because something that the, the brother said just triggered something in me. And I, I find, I don't, if I misunderstand you, I would like you to just correct me. Because I notice that sometimes the homosexual community want to take the place that is due to our bona fide girls. He spoke about the homosexuals getting put out as when, when they, they discovered that they are homosexuals. But that's a position that is reserved for our girls when they get pregnant in their mother's houses, that their mothers put them out. The homosexuals cannot claim that. And, and therefore, 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 what I want to say is that we need to be honest in our deliberations and in, in our speakings. Now, it is not good for either set, for the homosexual or for the heterosexual girl. But we cannot elevate it for ourselves while ignoring the fact that it is happening to, or it has been happening to our girl children over the years. And I cannot sit here and allow them to get away with these, these kind of things. And let me, let me just make this one other point. Sometimes I may use, and you may use, a chair to screw in a bulb or to reach something high. Now, we need to know, though, that that is, is an abuse or misuse of the chair. Because it was not made for our purpose. For our purpose, we have a step ladder. So although it fulfills the purpose in which we want and that was good for us, it does not mean that it was a correct use of the object. I thank you.
Thank you, Card. Next, next.
I'll just respond to two things if I can remember them. The idea that homosexuality is ubiquitous within the animal kingdom is, if that is being perpetuated, that's incorrect. Sometimes we see things happening within the animal kingdom and we don't understand. For example, the, because of an alpha male, the males in some groups are denied access to the females. It's not, and then they will have an action towards another male because they have no choice, they'll be killed. They cannot access the females. So it's denied access that promotes an activity between two males. It is not a natural behavior born by genetics or anything like that. Sometimes we might see in the, I think, the mobile community of the monkeys, we'll see that the, the male monkey has this little monkey at the back, a baby just born. And he is humping the back of a man and the baby is imitating that. We have a cultural environment in which this is being trained. Again, he's not being born a homosexual, but we've seen this kind of activity being climatized through the cultural behavior and so on. So he's being trained in that way. Also, in the American society, especially in Britain, England, you'll find that there is great hostility towards the Christian community, by the LGBT community. A lot of hostility, a lot of discrimination, a lot of anger, bitterness, rejection, intolerance, and so on by the LGBT community. And, and we've seen Christians being dragged out of their houses, being prosecuted, being locked up, their bibles pulled out their hand, the churches shut down, their mouths closed, and so on, over and over and over and over. And we cannot deny that. That exists. It doesn't exist in Barbados, but it exists in other places. And there seemed to be an agenda by the LGBT community to ensure that any voice against them is destroyed. Any voice. So how can we say as a community, a lifestyle choice, say that we want equality and we want to be fair, we want diversity? We want people to see us for who we are and to respect us and for, allow us to have a life. And at the same time, anyone who disagrees and don't share the same view as I, I lock you up and I charge you and I take away your life. That is not being fair. And I think we have to examine it and when we speak, speak fairly and, and in totality. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you very much. We, we go to the next audience member.
Hi, my name is Ron Arkin and I'm a human rights activist. I wanted to address several points. I put them some bullet points because honestly, I can't keep up with all the things to address. It's just ridiculous, to be honest. But Matthew stated the first point that I was going to make about how, you know, homosexuality is present in almost 500, 500 animal species. I mean, you would have to be real bad at your job to get that messed up. Talking about how in the animal kingdom, that when there is homosexuality present, that, you know, it is confused because, you know, there's no female present. When you look at penguin wings who like mate for life, how, how do you use that argument? There's, and even in that animal kingdom, you see where homosexuality has its purpose. When heterosexual couples leave their children behind, it is then the homosexual couples, again with the penguins, who then step in and raise that child. Leaving that child. Leaving that child, abandoning that child, will leave that child to die. But anyhow, I go on to the next point. So you said that being gay was a choice. I don't remember choosing to be heterosexual. So I don't know how someone knowing that our society is so homophobic would choose that level of oppression on themselves. I've had friends who, I can tell you, I had a friend who stayed up and cried with me. He said, he tried so hard all his life to be heterosexual, and he just can't because it was not a choice. And the only choice that I've seen is remaining or choosing to be complicit in a dehumanization of LGBT people. And that brings, again, to that point of the animal kingdom. I've only seen homophobia in our species. Next point. While the church may not actively pursue, you know, violence against the LGBT community, again, it remains complicit by being silent when they speak out. I mean, Ruann just said, her experiences, that is proof, her experiences. And what was your response to it? To dismiss it? And she's the only person here that I know of who is gay. So I mean, how can you, who in a position of power, a heterosexual person, tell her that her experience is not valid and dismiss it? And knowing that you've never, and you would never experience that? Next point. About procreating. I, my purpose was not to, you know, being put on this earth was not to just sit and learn about all day. There are heterosexuals who do not want children. There are heterosexual couples who cannot have children. And that argument of, you know, we were put here to procreate, it does not stand up against that. It just doesn't. Pardon me? Okay. Yes, that's pretty wise, don't engage me. And I have a six-year-old daughter. And I try to raise my child to be understanding of the complexities of life. I am not a perfect parent, and I would never say that I am. I make my mistakes in raising my child. But one thing, one of the mistakes that I have not made is being my child's first bully. I do not know if my child will ever grow up to be gay. I do not know her, I do not know my child's sexuality because she's six. Whenever her sexuality does come forward, whenever her sexuality does come forward, I will be accepting of it. Because when my child was being formed in my womb, the only thing that I asked for was that my child be healthy. I didn't ask for a heterosexual child. I asked for a healthy child. And if my child turns out to be gay, right? It's not the child being gay that would pain me. It's knowing that my child being born in this society, being born in this country, this country that I love so dear. She, the country does not love her back because of something that she cannot control. And that she would have to walk looking over her shoulder because there are people out there who are intolerant of something that she can't change. And just knowing that it could, it could drive her to a point where she would have to leave a country that she has been born into, a country of which she's a citizen, because of the homophobia that the church or society on a whole refuses to address. You say that the church is open for LGBT people to come and have a conversation, but then when they come and have a conversation, you shut them down and dismiss them. How is that, how is that being open to dialogue? It's not, it's not the oppression Olympics, talking about how children, girls being put out of their house for being pregnant, and that they can't claim that. It's not something to claim. It's not the oppression Olympics. Both things can happen, both things do happen. And saying, again, he brought up that point. But where has the church, that's happened for eons, I grew up hearing about that. Where has the church spoken out about that? Like discouraged it? Because I know parents who do that, using the Bible as a reference, as a weapon, and justifying it. The Bible can be used and twisted to a biased, you know, point of view. And that being that said, meaning, I'm also saying that your point of view is biased. So...
All right, thank you.
I know that I have people behind me that want to speak. And I am not sorry for going on so long, because it really needed to be said, to be honest. But, um, as, just finishing up, you said that, um, you made a point, I cannot, I don't want to paraphrase you, but basically what you said was that there are different types of oppression. Women face oppression. And then when you got to the LGBT, you said, um, basically in those amount of words, that it was not really, that they think is oppression. Something like that, right? I just, that is ridiculous. And I implore you to research the definition of oppression, honestly. That statement was embarrassing and just painful.
I want to ask you, thank you very much. I want to ask you one question.
Go ahead.
And remember, as a moderator, I am not for or against here. I'm just trying to moderate the discussion. But it's a question I have for gay rights activists who are not gay. Now, when Dr. Trevor alluded to the fact that he would not come and say or profess his sexuality in a form like this if he was homosexual or gay, you did something, and I want you to explain it to us in terms of how your mind works, working with people who are maybe homosexual, but you are not homosexual. And you said, I'm heterosexual, I'm heterosexual here? So it was like, almost like it is not okay subconsciously?
No.
Because like, for instance, say your name, say your name was Janelle, and I call you Kim, you would say, my name is Janelle. You would not say, my name is Kim. It was not what you said, it was how you said it. So I want you to explain how you...
No, the way that I said it, I wanted to make very clear that I was heterosexual because we are in a room, I'm assuming again, full of heterosexuals. And I wanted to state that as a heterosexual, I'm not okay with what is being said.
Okay, fair enough, thanks. Thank you. Thank you, I just want to, no, anyone want to react to the things she said? Or we can go on to the next one? And I mean, it's gonna be burning reactions, because we want to keep it flowing. Okay, go ahead, next, next, next mate, what did he say? Come, let's go, let's go, let's go.
I just want to react to something that was said, basically. And it's, I think she, you already said that she never chose to be heterosexual, something like that. But I think, and people say that they don't choose to be gay, that that's just how they are. But I've been married for thirty-one years, and I choose to be with my wife. If I want to, I can leave my wife and I can choose to be with a man. Because I have the power of choice. Every individual has the power of choice. So I don't understand how that it is so natural and normal for me to be heterosexual or for me to be gay. I think it's, I think we all make choices, and that is, that is how it was from the very beginning. We make choices, we choose to be or not to be. That's what we do.
I want to, I want to jump in here, I want to use moderator privilege to jump in here, to, I think I would be kind of betraying myself, I would not to use some level of information I have on the topic, especially it relates to violence, the discrimination, and also the whole idea of choice. I was a major participant of research done by the Ministry of Health in this country as it relates to men who have sex with men, MSMs. And we interviewed one hundred and seventy-seven males. This project was to take six months, and it took two years. And I did the psychosocial two-hour interview with about six hundred questions because I had to cross-question because they were vouchers giving out a hundred-dollar Kersheper voucher. I wanted to make sure people weren't just pretending to be gay, right? So we had some screening questions and all of that. And what I found interesting was two things I want to put out there for this discussion as we go forward. And one was, there was this feeling as though a lot of them did not have a choice. A lot of them from the age, tend to age of four sometimes, noted this attraction to the opposite sex. And I started to rethink my whole thing about nature versus nurture. And then I thought that, you know, probably with enough nurture, it become their nature, right? And I felt as though a lot of them, as we interviewed them through these grueling interviews, they were fighting with themselves so much. The other thing that was interesting was that, and this is probably the first time I'm saying this in public, is that as a member of the HIV's commission from two thousand and one to two thousand and five, and the Live Up campaign from two thousand and five to probably last year, I had my own views about the protection of homosexuals for funding. There's a heavy lobby behind, like Elton John and those people, they put a lot of money. And I felt as though these commissions, these boards and so on, felt as though they needed to ponder to continue to get this funding. And they were saying that there was no difference between the HIV rate, STI rate, than among the normal population. But as the doctors say, and I can say this, the researchers who were sympathetic to the MSMs came back with the results crying. Because out of those hundred and seventy-seven males who had sex with other males, over three-quarters of them had an STI or HIV. Three-quarters. And they ran the results back to the lab again to test it. And those are two things I want to put out there. So one, I want to support the community by saying, I do believe now from research, in that longitudinal-type research, because there was over a period of time with the same clients back and forth, that it may be this issue of choice. But I want to say that I don't think the community can no longer ignore the fact that they put themselves at greater health risk with STIs and HIV.
I just want to make a very brief comment. The choice may not be with the feelings, but there's certainly a choice with behavior. For example, suppose I have a strong feeling for three-year-old girls. That's pedophilia. Now, I may claim, but I can't help that, I born, so whatever. But I certainly have a choice with my behavior.
But what I wanted to, I want to underscore, I don't want this point to be lost. I don't want people to think it's just a feeling and you could just choose. It's like, say you're addicted to smoking. You do not want to smoke, but you do want to smoke. You get where I'm coming from? It is like almost an addiction and a compulsion. So I just wanted to highlight that clear. Let's go to the next person, just wanted to put that out there.
Hi, yeah, I just want to speak to the issue of homosexuality, what seems, appears to be homosexuality being practiced among animals, and that being a means of justifying humans practicing homosexuality. First, I want to say that humans are not animals. Man was created in the image of God. We are not animals. If we look into the animal kingdom, we also see high prevalence of infanticide, stealing, killing. Does that justify then humans practicing infanticide? Does that justify humans stealing? Does that justify humans killing each other? Yet these are practiced in the animal kingdom, all right? We as human beings are governed by God's moral law, not the animals. Animals don't have to repent for anything. Animals kill, they steal, and they don't have to repent for nothing. But human beings, we are comfortable to God by God's moral standards. That's why we are made in His image. Okay? So we cannot equate ourselves with animals. The only people who try to equate ourselves, equate with animals are evolutionists who think we come from animals. And that's the other worldview, because there are two worldviews here competing. There's the Genesis worldview of our origins and purpose, and there's the evolutionary worldview that there's no God, therefore, there's no purpose for living. I can do what I feel like doing, and I am comfortable to no one. That's the other worldview, which is fallacious because there's no scientific evidence for it. All the scientific evidence is for creation, just as the Bible says. So we are comfortable to the God of the Bible, and His rules are how we should live our lives. Because it is God's rules. So if God doesn't set the rules, then I set the rules. So if I set the rules, I can sleep with a man, I can, then I can set the rules, I can kill anybody. I can set the rules, I can sleep with a child. I can set the rules, I can steal. Who can tell me that stealing is wrong? You see, it is God who sets the rules. So I'm saying you cannot look through the animal kingdom to justify the lifestyle because the animals do other things that we condemn. I'm sure you condemn murder. I'm sure you condemn stealing, I hope so. I'm sure you condemn infanticide, I hope so, all right? But yet, we want to hold on to something that we seem to be equating to the lifestyle.
Point well, point well made. Now, before we go on to the next speaker, I want to tell you about something Impact Barbados is having. And you can get, you can take these numbers, prepare to take some numbers here. Impact World Family Life Conference come off at December twenty-eighth, December eighth, and nine, sorry, twenty seventeen. The conference venue will be Power in the Blood Assembly at Q Road, Tudor Beach, St. Michael. And on the Friday night, from seven PM to nine PM, you're gonna have the plenary session with Mark Anderson. You can look out for that. And on the Saturday, they're gonna have some workshops from nine AM to one PM. Now, there're gonna be two tracks. There'll be the parent and adult track, and the children's equipping and empowering track. Now, speakers will be Mark Anderson of Impact World and Travis Miles of the International House of Prayer, IHOP. For more information and details and registration information, you can check them out or send them an email at eventsbb@impactworld.global or take these numbers for Impact World Office, six-two-two-three-zero-two-eight, that is six-two-two-three-zero-two-eight, or six-two-two-three-zero-seven-five. Admission by registration, and the conference events are free. Yes, you heard that right, free conference events. Next speaker, please.
Good night. I'm a Christian, and I'm also an educator. And I am the deputy principal in a secondary school. And I see a lot, I hear a lot. A lot comes to me because of the position I'm in. And at my school, there are open gays, males, male and female. And I have to interact with them. I have to treat them like I treat anybody else, and which I do because as a Christian, I have to treat people fairly and equally. What I've noticed with those, especially females, is the dominance which they're, which they display against the younger girls especially. How they forcefully push themselves on them, how they corner them in the bathroom, the, especially fifth-form girls with the junior girls, the first-form girls. They corner them in the bathroom, and they're very abusive to them. I watched the homosexual male, how they flaunt their lifestyle in front of everybody, how abusive they are, how disrespectful they are to their peers. I've seen their violence, I've seen how they react, I've seen, I've heard what they would have said, how they're verbally abusive to other males and females. So I see these things firsthand. I'm not asking whether these things happen or not. I see these things, these things come to my desk, and I have to deal with them. And so to say that, you know, that the, or to downplay the violence, to downplay the aggression and the abuse in the homosexual community, I mean, is really wrong because I see it, and I see it at a very... because I see it and I see it at a very early age and I see that that dominance and and I see the abuse that that others have to see and I see the fear, you know, that is, that is caused in those relationships. I I see it every, every day. So I'm not talking about hearsay, I'm talking about what I see amongst young people in our school system.
Thank you very much, thank you, sir. And we have the final audience coming at this moment before we hand over to the panel for closing comment.
Two quick things, um there's a website, I think it's called Not Born Gay by gays and lesbians uh in America, and they had um published, sized it all over the internet and all over billboards and so on, their faces and so on. Right, their faces all over America, um and then the, that would be the right, I think. Those who say that they were born this way, um force them to remove these posters and these, these publications and everything, telling them that, how dare them say that they were not born that way. Um, these are people, they have videos all over the internet telling you that they made a choice. And someone who walked away, were no longer gay, said that they did make a choice. And there are those who purport that they were born or genetic, they have genetic evidence, are again opposed to these who says that they were never born this way. I want just there for me and for a few Christians that I know, uh I could speak for them, um and I would believe others, but I just want to say that I would defend, I would protect any person who is being abused, who's being hated, yeah, who's being discriminated against. I would die for that person, I would put myself in harm's way. In other words, I would protect you, I would die for you, I would represent you. And I have no, no fear or no worry whatsoever because you are a human, you are God's creature. It has nothing to do with whether you're gay or not, but your life is important. And I would defend you with my life because I love you.
Thank you very much, it cannot have ended on a better note. We now hand back over to the panel for their closing comments, bearing in mind I've been given five minutes to put the curtain down on this panel discussion, the inherent dangers of alternative lifestyles.
Okay, I'll keep it as short as I can. The demands for the repeal of all laws regarding sodomy, this is a gay pride parade, demand for legislation of all forms of sexual expression, including pedophilia, sexual abuse of children, demand to change the age of consent to allow sex with minors. And um the, the, the genesis or the genes essential to the program of the gay lobby is that no gay can change and no gay should be changed. In addition to to suit what the gentleman asked, the whole issue of the G-spot, and I'll close with this, the prostate gland, also known as the male G-spot or A-spot, can be stimulated by or during digital or gut challenges, gastric disruption. Anal sex exposes participants to principal dangers, infection due to the high number of infectious microorganisms not found elsewhere on the body and physical damage to the anus and the rectum due to their vulnerability. Among the diseases with which anal sex is associated are HIV, human papillomavirus, which can increase the risk of anal cancer, thyroid fever, and various diseases associated with the infectious nature of fecal matter or sexual intercourse in general. The high concentration of white blood cells and so forth. When we look at this, I'm saying that the human anus, the human gut was designed as an exit and not an entrance. Go on.
May I say in closing how much I appreciate everyone who have made their contributions here and how we need to respect the fact that each of them have stood in their various capacities to speak. And we know that many times, especially in the Barbadian context, to do what we did is very un-Barbadian because many times the discrimination through uh people stigmatizing you is real. And therefore, I deeply appreciate each person who sits here. However, let me close with this to the Christian church. Because of my experience in counseling those who are homosexual, we must not ever think that there's not love that's going on. Because although we can talk about the organs that are suitable, although we can talk about the various prostheses that's used, although we can talk about the various things, within the homosexual community, there's a deep love for the person that may be partner. And we cannot say, well, they're two men, they can't love, they're two women, they can't love. See, because the beauty of what God made in our sexuality goes beyond just organs. There's a person that you want to experience, there's a person that you bond with, there's a person you want to share yourself with, there's a person. And whether you choose that to be a woman, another man, another woman, there is that experience of love. And we must not allow ourselves not to understand that that is happening. So we can understand how two men can love each other. Two women can love and desire each other as deeply as a man to a woman. So let us be aware of that. However, I must qualify that by saying that no matter what desires we have, and God made us with desires, we cannot function without them. There are some desires that are inordinate. There are some desires that are inappropriate. There are some desires that ought not be fulfilled because they are not good. They are not wholesome, they are not godly. David and Jonathan love each other. And the Bible says that their love surpassed other women, you see, because the love did not lead to a sexual union, but the bond of two people that would die, as the brother said, for one another. God is love and any two people can love. But we must love appropriately and we must love in a manner that is wholesome and that is good. Thank you, God bless you.
First, let me thank Raleigh Barbados for having this discourse, which is healthy discourse and extremely informative. And I I believe that this can only benefit us as a people, as a nation, and our children especially. But I am equally concerned and I would want to address the LGBT community because before tonight, I recognize that there have been complaints, re-violence against the community. But we have evidence that suggests that there's broad acceptance, increasing acceptance of persons who have those feelings. And the reality of it is that we can look across our nation and have an honest discussion and discourse that no way in the world would you have this level of acceptance by anyone other than in Barbados. The fact that we can have this conversation tonight in here is kudos to us as a people, despite how we feel. But the church must not be silenced about what their mission and mandate is. Because the reality of it is that it's not only the LGBT community. We have a lot of different worldviews that are being promoted and funded, but the word of, the word of God will not change, it will remain. And we have work to do as Christians and we must embrace. And and we do so as a church member, as a Christian. I I really don't see what I'm hearing when the, when it comes to the community. They come into our church and they're accepted, they're in our homes, they're in our schools, and they're accepted. There's a very high level of tolerance for the community. And to be, be carrying the narrative that there's violence against the community is something that we need not hear in this island when it is not true. Because we could never have a meeting like this in Jamaica. And not, but maybe in recent times. But the reality of it is that it cannot be normalized by the church. It cannot be normalized by the church, but it doesn't mean that we would not embrace. And but there's a high level of tolerance and as said earlier, whether it be women, children, oppression against several groups is evident in Barbados, but having tolerance for humanity and as church people, we will embrace, but it will not prevent us from preaching and standing for what the word of God says.
I'd like us to understand as far as the thrust towards the normalization of homosexuality and transgenderism, et cetera, concerned. And this is being thrust and and forged and pushed upon persons, mostly in the Western world, by some powerful nations, we were talking about power before. So powerful nations, people with lots of money but spiritually impoverished. We have to understand the context. And I would say to all of us, Christian, non-Christian, gay or straight, we need to understand the context that it is really fundamentally an assault on God's image. Then in terms of our own individual response, let us think consequence, let us respect choice. But let us know that God's truth is unchanging and it is the truth that will set you free. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Corey Lane, I've been your moderator for this panel discussion. I want you to join me as we thank Queens College for the use of their hall. We want to thank the technical team, the persons who took care of the cameras and the sound. And of course, I want to give special thanks to our panelists. Join me as we thank Pastor Paul Leacock from the First Baptist Church, Dr. Trevor Shepherd from Sakina Medical Center, Pastor Dale Bradford from Elohim Family Center, Mr. Sean Gibbs, President of the Barbados National Council of Parent Teachers Associations, and Dr. Veronica Evelyn, Consultant Sociologist from Protech Incorporated. And of course, I want to thank you, the audience, without you, we would have been talking to ourselves. As it shall be in the beginning, so shall it be in the end. We will now ask for the closing prayer, you could probably say the, I thought, and I, I'm, you're welcome. We will now have closing prayers.
I don't mean stand and say the grace together. Please know that these discussions will continue. Please know that Raleigh Barbados is not going to just appear in a year's time, but by the grace of God throughout the rest of this year and especially next year, we expect to come back to you to keep these discussions going, not just on the issue that we had tonight, but there are lots of other issues that we need to address, that we will address. Anything that threatens our families, our faith, our faith and our freedoms, we will be prepared to speak on. And we encourage you to support these ventures. We thank you for across the Christian spectrum who've come. And we ask for your support as we go from just annual activity to a significant movement that will move us all in the direction God would have us. And now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with us now and forevermore. Amen. God bless you, have a good night. Travel safely.